Yes, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, Public Meeting Tuesday, October 4th, 2016. The time is now 7:37. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice of this meeting was published in December 24th, 2015, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Star Ledger, and the Herald News. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's office. Commissioner Rogers is absent excused. Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans is absent excused. Commissioner Petrakko?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present mayor, except for Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Evans, they are absent excused.
Minutes?
Minutes. We have minutes for September 6th, 2016. I need a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Communications and Correspondents?
Yes, Mayor. The Historic Restoration Trust of Nutley has submitted a social fair permit application for a wine tasting event at Kingsland Manor to be held on Saturday, November 12th, 2016, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Words, Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I have a shade tree report for August of 2016.
And Clerk Bills?
Bills for Tuesday, October 4th, 2016. Public Affairs, $113,674.74. Revenue and Finance, $2,565,769.35. Public Safety, $106,959.38. Public Works, $36,123.98. Parks and Public Property, $694,718.2. Total Payroll, $750,351.67. For a grand total of $4,267,597.14. Need a motion?
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's it for bills, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Very pleased to welcome tonight the Prism Capital Partners. They closed on the Roche property last week, and we welcome the mayor, and we'd like to bring up Gene Diaz and Ed Cohen to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We're very pleased to be here today. Finally. It was quite an endeavor, spent over 22 months working very closely with Roche, with Hackensack, with Seton Hall, putting together the pieces which we think are really anchoring next 100 years for the Roche campus here in Nutley and neighboring Clifton. We think there are a lot of exciting things that are going to come. We've got a great anchor in Hackensack and Seton Hall there that hopes to open first classes by August of, fall of '18, so they're on a very rushed schedule to get moving. We have a fair number of interested, additional interested corporations now we're in discussions with that are looking at the campus and considering the campus as a possible location for their operations. That's going to take a lot of doing and working with the municipality, working with the state, the incentive programs, and continuing to support these corporations that we're looking to instill there and ensconce there for the long term. Got a couple of goals in mind for the general. First and foremost is to have a multi-user park, so that the future never has, what's in the future, never a Roche situation again where we have just one large company picking up and leaving. We've seen that devastate New Jersey, many other communities all across the state, not just here in Nutley, but it's happened elsewhere. So you're not unique. I don't mean to say that in a pejorative, but you're not unique. It's happening everywhere. And one of the cures is to create a multi-disciplined park that's a home for many different types of users and many types of businesses that can weather the economic downturn, the upticks with much better degree of flexibility. We're going to be working with the towns over the next 12 to 18 months to look to design an overall master plan campus. It's going to take a lot of transparency, a lot of input. We hope to hold lots of public meetings and public forums with the assistance of the commissioners and their professional staffs. We think it's important that you get to see everything that we're doing as we process. It's your community. And it, yes, we're a large owner in here now, yes, we're a large stakeholder, and yes, we are a large taxpayer, but you've been here all your life, multiple lives and multiple generations, and we look forward to learning from that in terms of what's important to the community, what we can do special on this campus that will help long-term. To that end, I think that there's a couple of things that we're going to do right away. We'll have a website up very shortly that will sort of describe the process that took place over the previous, just to get everyone back up to speed under, it was announced, you know, more than two years ago that there was this deal in the works, and I think everyone kind of fell asleep wondering, well, gee, what happened and what took place. We're going to get everybody educated back up to understanding how complex a transaction this was, all the things that were required to happen, make happen, we're put in place, and it just took some time to do that. We're then going to have that as a forum and opportunity up there also, as we begin to develop a master plan for future build-out and development on the campus. Opportunities, we'll also be having that as a forum, people to see what we're presenting to the town, and our discussions with the township, working along in its progress. We view it as a very collaborative effort. Important that everybody has an opportunity, voice their opinions, voice their concern. We hope you voice an awful lot of your flaws as well, that's always welcome, but that's going to be the process that will unfold. You're not going to see work happening tomorrow. The hospital hopes to start some demolition, Hackensack and Seton Hall inside the building in the next month, but it'll be a while until we can get zoning and permission and everything through the municipalities where everybody feels that they're getting what's happening here, needs to be happening here. That'll take some time, so don't anticipate a major change overnight, you're not going to see that, but what you are going to see is an awful lot of thoughtful, thoughtful and measured pace of our work and our efforts to make certain that what we do here, if you look around at Prism's other developments and the quality that we've brought, fights and some of these developments, I think you'd be very pleased at the end of the day to know that my partner Ed and I take awful lot of pride of ownership, really looking at the details, figuring out the problems and the issues, solving them in as amicable a process as we can. Let me say this about your town. For 22 months, we've been working with, then it was Mayor Petrakko, now Commissioner Petrakko, now Mayor Scarpelli, Commissioner Tucci, the other two commissioners as well, and your professionals. You guys are lucky, had a great, great administration. Can't tell you enough how many towns we've been in front of that don't have the kind of genuine thoughtfulness, interest, and selfless interest in their town, happen for their town. Their professionals are outstanding, and we're looking forward to working with them. Our professionals have a high degree of respect for them, and on a personal relationship, I think it's been wonderful working with this commission. We look forward to it. They're going to do this, they're going to do Nutley very proud, and we're going to enjoy working with it. We really thank them, and if anyone wants that.
During the sleepy period of 22 months or so, I can assure you that my partner Gene and I didn't get much sleep. We have been working at a feverish pace to make sure this golden gem of a property, you know, gets the proper attention, and we are, we finally felt we were a caged animal for this long period of time, and now the gates have been opened, and I must tell you, we are thoroughly excited about bringing a stellar project onboard for your town and the neighboring town, and we can't wait to get this going. I think my partner covered everything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene, Ed. Appreciate your kind words. We look forward to working with you, filling those buildings that are empty as quickly as possible, redeveloping the site, replacing some of our ratables, boosting our local economy, providing our job opportunities for our residents, increasing our property values. So we look forward to doing it. These are exciting times, and we look forward to that. I'm going to let the commissioners comment.
Tucci?
Yes. Obviously, I spent a lot of time with you folks, all right, as did everyone else, over the last 22 months, but it's nice to officially welcome you to Nutley now that everything is closed and legal, and there are no longer any obstacles. We don't have to hear from Basel Switzerland anymore or anyone else. It was a complicated deal. I think you guys mastered it very well. Your track record speaks for itself. As the mayor said, we look forward to many, many years with you here in Nutley, providing opportunities for our citizens, helping to restore our tax rate, and just improving the township as a whole. All right, from the beginning, I guess Commissioner Petrakko and I always envisioned that this redevelopment or repurposing, however you want to categorize it, all right, would absolutely increase our property values here and be an added boost for Nutley. And I think it's important for everyone to understand that what happened with Hoffman LaRoche will never happen again because of the diversification of the site, all right? And I wish you all the best in the world. I know you gentlemen are the ultimate professionals. I know we're going to have open lines of communication, and I look forward to working with you.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Where should I start, Gene? I could tell you, you guys are...
Skip the boring stuff in the beginning.
Well, you know what? Thank you for recognizing the hard work that we did, but it was really a joint effort with Ed and yourself, Gene. I can remember calling you 11, 12 o'clock at night, and you were still in the office, which I couldn't believe. A long time ago, I had a business partner that I learned a lot from, and he says, the most important thing in business, people who are successful have something called staying power. And I have to tell you, you know, no one in the audience or no one at home will ever realize all the obstacles that were in place, and not too many companies that would have stayed with that deal because, as we know and you know, there was a lot of hoops to jump through at the time. And from the first day I met you guys, the thing that I liked the most about you guys is you're family people, you care, you know, you have an interest in the town, you have an interest in our kids, our families. To me, that's worth everything. I think we have the right people in place, which are the two of you. I spent a lot of time with you, as the Commissioner Tucci at the time, and I couldn't be happier for you guys to see it through, and I mean that from my heart, and I really look forward to the future, you know, of working together and really giving the residents of the township what they deserve, because, as I said many times to Commissioner Tucci, when Roche called me, during my first year as my term as mayor, actually it was the June when I got elected in May and said they were leaving, we all thought they were kidding, didn't we? And, you know, it's really, could have been devastating for the town, but with good work from our board and good work with your company that, like I said, you really are family people and really cared about seeing this through. So I'm excited about the future. Let's speed it up, like I said from the beginning, Gene, and let's make this happen for our residents. Congratulations.
Ed, you said some kind things about our professionals, so our quarterback, Mr. Jenna Tempo, you have anything to add?
No, I have nothing to add. No, I have nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, guys. We look forward to meeting you, and we're spending a lot of time together, so thank you for coming by, and we'll be probably meeting shortly, so...
A lot of us. Thanks.
Thank you.
Public comment on agenda items. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks of the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of decorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Would anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? No one, we'll move on to ordinance introductions. Ordinance number 3342, an ordinance to fix the salaries of certain officers, employees of the Township of Nutley County, Wessex, State of New Jersey, effective October 18th, 2016. This, I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on October 18th, 2016.
Need a motion?
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Yes, I have an ordinance for introduction for handicap spot on Reverend Robert Street. This is ordinance number 3350, an ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the code of the Township of Nutley, Chapter 228, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article 7, Special Zones and Areas, Section 29A, entitled Handicap Parking, to add the locations set forth thereon. I move that this ordinance be passed to second reading and advertised in Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on October 18th.
November 1st. Sorry, Commissioner.
Oh, that's November 1st it is.
Need a motion?
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Resolutions?
Yes, for...
Commissioner Rogers and your...
Yes, Mayor. Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Wessex, State of New Jersey, that Michelle Schreiber be appointed as Animal Cruelty Investigator for the Township of Nutley, as per the inter-local animal control agreement between the Township of Montclair Animal Control Department and the Township of Nutley until December 31st, 2016 expiration date of current executed.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko? Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas in 2015, 2016, an estimated 231,840 new cases of invasive breast cancer and 60,290 cases of non-invasive breast cancer are expected to be diagnosed in women in the United States. And whereas in 2016, approximately 40,900 women and men will lose their lives as a result of breast cancer, and whereas breast cancer is the second-leading cause of cancer death for women in the U.S. after lung cancer, and whereas recent strides in early detection, including the use of mammography and prompt treatment, have significantly reduced the suffering and deaths caused by this disease, and whereas the Department of Public Affairs will continue to work with the Nutley Thriving Survivors, a nonprofit corporation, to develop programs to increase awareness of the symptoms of breast cancer and to support those women and men who may be diagnosed with the disease. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Wessex, State of New Jersey, recognize October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Be it further resolved that we urge all women and their families in the Township of Nutley to seek assistance in obtaining the facts and information about breast cancer, mammography, and available support groups for victims, and to participate in the program scheduled this year for residents of the township and breast cancer survivors. Be it further resolved that residents are encouraged to join the Thriving Survivors and celebrate the lives of Nutley women who have been affected by breast cancer by attending the 14th Annual Nutley Thriving Survivors Walk on Friday, October 7th, 2016, at 7:00 PM at the John H. Walker Middle School, as well as the 14th Annual Thriving Survivors Brunch on Sunday, October 23rd, 2016, at 11:00 AM at the Forest Hill Field Club, 9 Belville Avenue, Bloomfield, New Jersey. I move...
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA 19:44A-20.5, and whereas the request for qualification for Township Forester was received and opened on Wednesday, August 24th, 2016, and whereas the most responsible and responsive request for qualification was from the Shade Tree Department, LLC, John Linson, P.O., Box 6089, West Orange, New Jersey, and whereas the Shade Tree Department, LLC, John Linson, New Jersey Certified Tree Expert, Number 198, has provided these services in the past in the Township of Nutley and is particularly suited to provide continued service, and whereas the term of this contract is for a one-year period commencing on September 1, 2016, and will continue through August 31st, 2016, and whereas the contract is not to exceed $22,000, and funds are available from account 6-01512200 in the amount of $5,000, and account 7-01512200 in the amount of $17,000. Funds have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Wessex, State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to Shade Tree Department, LLC, John Linson, as described herein. The response to the request for qualification will be placed on file with this resolution, and notice of this action shall be printed once in the Nutley Sun, according to the local public contracts law. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko? Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized and professional ACA reporting services to ensure compliance with IRS regulations for year 2016 reporting, and whereas such services may be acquired as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to provisions of NJSA 19:44A-20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate, and whereas Prime Point LLC, located at 2 Springside Road, Mount Holly, New Jersey, has submitted a proposal dated September 20th, 2016, with the anticipated cost of $6,000 to complete these services and assure compliance on behalf of the Township of Nutley, and whereas funds are available from budget account 6-01526200 and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, whereas Prime Point LLC has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification which certifies Prime Point has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit Prime Point from making any reportable contribution to the term of the contract. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Wessex, State of New Jersey, hereby authorize the Commissioner of Parks and Public Property to enter into a contract with Prime Point LLC. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas Resolution 9816 was duly adopted by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley at the meeting of April 6th, 2016, whereas Resolution 9816 requires the following amendment to the title of the grant, and whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property of the Township of Nutley desires to further the public interest by obtaining the Community Stewardship Incentive Program Hazard Mitigation Grant from the State of New Jersey in the amount of approximately $25,000 to fund tree removal in various locations due to hazardous, vulnerable, and diseased conditions, and whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property resolves that Maro Tucci as Commissioner of the Department is authorized, A, to make application for such a grant if awarded to execute the grant agreement with the state for a grant in the amount of not less than $1 and not more than $25,000, and C, to execute any amendments thereto, as well as any amendments thereto, which do not increase the grantee's obligation. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Wessex, State of New Jersey, hereby agree to comply with all applicable federal, state, and municipal laws, rules, and regulations in its performance pursuant to the... I move the resolution.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley Ordinance 665-22, Preservation of Trees, states that tree removal permits must be obtained for a cost of $50 per tree, and whereas the Township of Nutley Department of Parks and Recreation authorizes a refund for each tree permit submitted upon the planting of a new tree on said property. Replacement trees or trees, size, and species must be approved in advance by the Township Forester, and whereas funds will be available from account C-01904-905. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Wessex, State of New Jersey, that the Township Treasurer is authorized to refund the tree permit fee collected as per Shade Tree Preservation Ordinance to Donald Beasley, 27 Sylvan Place. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petrakko, will you read Commissioner Evans and your resolutions?
Sure. This is on behalf of Commissioner Evans. Whereas Resolution Number 216-16, to appoint Edmund Benjamin Brown as the part-time municipal tax assessor for the Township of Nutley, was adopted by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in their meeting held on Tuesday, September 6th, 2016, and whereas in order to comply with NJSA 48:9-148, the resolution must reflect the appointment for a partial term from August 30th, 2016 until June 30th, 2017, and then four-year term beginning July 1st, 2017, and ending on June 30th, 2021. Whereas Resolution Number 216-16 does not provide the correct municipal tax assessor terms as per NJSA 48:148, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Wessex, State of New Jersey, that the Resolution Number 216-16 be hereby rescinded. Resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas Edmund Benjamin Brown is highly experienced certified tax assessor and real estate appraiser and has satisfied the continuing education requirements for said certification, and whereas the appointment authority of the Township of Nutley is the diarist of appointing Edmund Benjamin Brown, CTA, as a part-time municipal tax assessor for the Township of Nutley, in accordance with NJSA 54:1-35.31, and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Wessex, State of New Jersey, hereby appoint Edmund Benjamin Brown to a part-time position of municipal tax assessor in the Township of Nutley for a partial term from August 30th, 2016, until June 30th, 2017, and then four-year term beginning July 1st, 2017, and ending on June 30th, 2021, as per NJSA 48:9-148. Move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Okay, this is my resolution. Whereas, whereas New Jersey is in the midst of a life-threatening opiate abuse epidemic, and whereas the Partnership for a Drug-Free New Jersey has designated October 6th, 2016, as Knockout Opiate Abuse Day, initiative with dual purpose to educate families of the addictive qualities of opiate pain medicines and their link to heroin abuse rates in New Jersey. An outreach to physicians with safer prescribing messages found in the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Guidelines for prescribing opiates, which include considering other therapies, setting realistic treatment goals with patient and discussing with patients the pros and cons of opiates. And whereas the Township of Nutley and the Nutley Municipal Alliance Hope Initiative supports programs designed to raise awareness about opiate abuse in New Jersey and take steps to prevent addiction. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Wessex, State of New Jersey, that in an effort to join forces with initiatives bringing awareness to drug epidemic facing us today, we hereby name October 6th, 2016, as Knockout Opiate Abuse Day in the Township of Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Just before I vote, you know, I'd just like to say a couple words with, you know, what this is, and tried with our Hope Committee to really prevent this from happening. It seems like our children, adults, these pain pills are more prevalent, not only in Nutley, but everywhere, and I've never been a commissioner to sweep that under the carpet at all. It's a problem in Nutley, as it is throughout our country. Go to a doctor, and they want to prescribe pain pills, please do everything in your power to take Advil. power to take Advil instead of that, a narcotic, because it's unbelievable, the people who pass through public safety who are professionals and the complete opposite of what you think a drug addict would look like, and they're hooked on these drugs. And then, as we all know, with the deaths that we have buried our own children in in this town, which is disgusting, you know, the kids get on these pain pills for some reason, and then when they can't afford to buy them, somehow they wind up on heroin because it's a cheaper choice of drugs. So please, if you're having a problem, seek help. If you are going to a doctor that's prescribing them, try to get off them because it does lead to other things, and it's really an epidemic, like I said, and it is here in our hometown for sure, and it's all over the country. So a little luck from God and, you know, good town, hopefully we could save some people from this terrible experience going forward. I vote aye. Thank you.
Very well said, Commissioner. Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli, thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the Township Clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for the purchase of multi-space parking pay stations for the Township of Nutley to receive on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Chambers, Third Floor Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, on Wednesday, October 26, 2016, at 3:00 PM prevailing time, at which time they will be open and read. I move the resolution.
Second. Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas raffle applications have been received from Nutley Irish American Alliance, License Number 4116, on-premise 50/50 cash raffle on Saturday, November 12, 2016, and Nutley Irish American Alliance, License Number 4216, night at the races Saturday, November 12, 2016. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved, and a municipal clerk is authorized to issue the licenses. I move the resolution.
Second. Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Now time, if anybody would like to address the Board of Commissioners. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of decorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
For Remo 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Scarpelli, under the ordinance, you have the high and the low on the salaries. When Lucille and Evelyn were the town clerks, we had no problems getting information as far as the salary, the current position, if it was occupied or not. Last meeting, I spoke to the town clerk, and I submitted an Oprah at her request. The answer was there was no documents available. Do you think it's a lot easier to have somebody get their answers prior to the hearing, at the hearing? It's not, there's no time limit on it, and I can get up and ask a lot of questions, or I can get an Oprah prior to.
Mayor, I would like to address that if you would give me the opportunity.
Right ahead.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Take care.
Mr. Moore, your Oprah request, which I reviewed for the clerk, asked for documents that do not exist yet. You have the ordinance, proposed ordinance, which have salary ranges. You asked for the actual salary increases that were part of the range. You didn't want the range, you wanted the actual salaries. Nobody's gotten their salary increased yet. The ordinance hasn't passed. No commissioners have raised their salary. So the answer to your specific Oprah request was that the documents do not exist, and that is the truth. You don't have to smear the clerk because you didn't ask for something that, you asked for something that doesn't exist. She is diligently responding to all of your Oprah requests. You and I have dealt with the Oprah request directly. I counseled her on this particular Oprah request. We checked with the treasurer, we checked with the different departments. No one has gotten a salary increase because of the ordinance change. If that changes, anybody gets a raise, we can provide you with those documents, but it hasn't happened yet.
When is it going to happen? If you want to clarify the position...
No, it's not my decision if the...
I didn't ask...
Commissioners, right now, the ordinance only adjusts the ranges. That's all it does. We do it every year. There have been no increases yet based on the changes in the ordinance. Commissioners decide to do that, they will do that. And then you've already requested, and we've provided you in the past, the list of the salaries of all the employees. Nothing that we're hiding. So I think your statement is a little misleading, and I think to criticize the clerk on that is completely wrong. I will always guide the clerk when she has a question, and she always comes to me if there's an issue that she... Specifically with the language of your Oprah request. So we're more than happy to review your request. We always try to respond timely, which we did here, but the answer to your question was those documents do not exist the way you framed the question. Now, if you didn't get a copy of the proposed ordinance, you obviously are entitled to that. I think you got it from last time?
I have it from, I have it here.
Okay, so you can see that there are ranges, there are no actual salaries there. You asked for the changes in the salaries provided by this ordinance. The documents have not yet been created.
So according to you, if I understand you correctly, is that nobody gets a raise until the end?
I didn't say that, Mr. Moore.
Oh, okay.
You don't seem to listen to the words that I said.
I think I'm listening...
I said until, excuse me, I said until the commissioners decide to give somebody an increase, then it will be created by way of a document that they will create, or that the treasurer will create related to the increase.
And when would those increases be forthcoming?
How would I know that, Mr. Moore? I'm not running the departments.
But you're suggesting that you're putting this one through initially to be able to raise a salary. From what I understand you're saying, no salary's been raised at all, so it's not going to be done at least here.
I didn't suggest anything. I told you factually what happened, actually why you got a response that said the documents don't exist yet. You can believe anything that you want, but when they do, they will happen, or that you'll make an Oprah request. Document exists, we will do it. We do it every Oprah request.
In here, you also have, and which my other windows... I believe you have future positions which are not occupied currently.
As you know from the last time when it was... Able to have positions or pay employees, there has to be an ordinance that provides that position. It is done every year, done now, to clean up some issues, I understand. I wasn't involved in creating it. That's the purpose of it. We have to have an ordinance that has the ranges of the salary.
And I'll put my other Oprahs in later on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Good evening. Carmine Alessio, 81 East Center Street. Yeah, a couple weeks ago, I came here and discussed the issue about the gas leaks, and I watched it unravel. I watched myself on Channel 42, and I saw that I was speaking, but my lips were like flapping together, and no sound was coming out. When I made my complaint about the gas leaks, I do specifically remember when my lips were flapping around that I said that, you know, why weren't the leaks attended to before the blacktop was being paved there? And I didn't hear that, you know, on Channel 42, so my main law about it was after the street is paved, it's not supposed to be touched for five years. So that's my understanding that the leak should have been fixed before. So like, I got to come back here again and restate this stuff. And what I did was, when my lips were smacking around, and this is like the third time I'm saying it, and I want to say it again about the five-year law that you're not supposed to rip up the street unless there's a gas emergency. I went to Nutley High School, and I spoke to Dennis, the principal. I said, you know, these young guys, like, I'm looking at myself, and again, my lips are like going like this, and no sound's coming out, and the Nutley Sun, which I feel is very, very dishonest, they're coming across with some quotes that I said, which I did say over the microphone that evening, but the most important point was, you're not supposed to rip up the street for five years unless there's an emergency gas leak. Now, I think that was a pretty good point because I'm saying to myself, if this continues, like as the towns pave their street real beautiful, and there's like gas leaks, and they have to come back and rip up the street, like my utility bill, like how much more could it take as far as being like, you know, raised every year? That's like a burden on utility bills. So, you know, that's another point there, but I like to know if this microphone is okay, because, you know, if you move around, you know, the important, I could be like saying something, and it doesn't come across, and then the media, they could, of course, they're biased towards somebody like me, and they're not going to actually say the right thing about the five-year not to disturb the blacktop, you know, unless there's an emergency. So again, that's like the fourth time. So if you want to put it in the paper, put the right thing in the newspaper. Don't put a couple of quotes that mean absolutely nothing. But, you know, like I said, I'm glad that they came back the other day and resurfaced and milled the street. Now it's back to its original form, which was a great thing, but like I said, I can't imagine how high these utility bills are going to go in the future if it just continues the way it's continuing. And, you know, I'll let that go. I kind of like missed the resolution part. I thought that after the, you know, after every commissioner reads their resolution, then you go up and you can like, you know, have, if you have a question, you can, you know, ask the question, but I noticed that that is before commissioners read the resolution. Like Mr. Petracca read his res, I figured after he read his resolution that I would, you know, come up and make a comment on whichever one that I wanted to make a comment on. And the one that I wanted to make a comment on, Mr. Rogers is not here today in regards to the pest control. This lady, Michelle from Montclair, she was very helpful. I had a, like, I have a problem, or been having an ongoing problem with animals and pests, like undermining my garage to a point where it's so out of control because down in the east, on East Center Street in that area, three tracts of land have been like rebuilt, the cell racks track, the technical coating, and the park was renovated, and I'm over there, and I'm getting everybody's pests, brownhogs, like not, I don't just have one family in my yard, I have like three tracts of land of wildlife undermining my garage. So my question for the record to Mr. Rogers would have been, is she just in charge of investigating like animal cruelty, as this agenda says right here, or are they, can you be able to call the town, and if you are infested, like do it the proper way, have someone come down here and like just, you know, get rid of the pests?
Mr. Alessio, obviously Commissioner Rogers isn't here tonight to answer that question. You could give him a call, and maybe he can answer that question on what...
Right, right. Is my five minutes up, by the way?
Your five minutes is up, but I do want to go back to East Center Street for you because if, you know, a couple weeks ago when you were here, you didn't stick around for me to answer you. So I hope when my, I hope when my lips were flapping around on Channel 42...
No, they weren't.
You were able to hear what I had to say.
I...
To explain that we do have a five-year moratorium. Only time public service comes out and rips up the road when there's an emergency, and there was a gas leak on that street. As you know, public service was on East Center Street before we paved for two weeks fixing gas leaks.
I'm aware of that.
Now, and like I explained...
I'm not getting in any debate with you.
You don't have to get into a debate because...
I heard, I heard what you said and...
It's time for me to talk.
I heard what, you know, said initially. I watched it on TV three or four times. I mean, like, there's no explanation to me other than the fact that what I said is 100% true, and, you know, you have your view and your opinion, and I have mine. I know what happened.
And if you would have let me explain, I would have told you that public service was coming back.
But you did. I heard it, I heard it the next day on TV. I heard it the next...
Thank you, Mr. Alessio. Would anybody else like to be heard?
Can I, can I ask you one other question? Is this microphone being at a pertaining to my five, is this fixed now? Because it's been like...
Alessio, it seems like it's picking up to me.
Well, it didn't pick up that one night, like, you know...
I can't answer that.
I'd like to make a donation. I'll write out a check right now if it would be put towards this microphone, because if you, if you remember, I have, now I'm going to penalize you people. I'm coming for six years, twice a month.
We look forward to it, Mr. Alessio. Commissioner Tucci said...
I'm going to write, I'm going to write out a check because this microphone's been like this, like way before you, your predecessors, like way before, it never seems to get fixed. And there's always a loophole for the, for the media to, like, you know, like, I don't, as far as I know, dubbing, is there dubbing? I heard there was an email about dubbing, like, these are like documented, like, they're supposed to be information that you come here, and they're documented, and it's a...
Alessio, your five minutes is up, please.
Mayor, can I, can I get to Mr. Alessio? And I agree with you that the sound system does need to be improved. We're actually in the process of getting quotations, all right, to see what the amount would be so we can determine whether or not we have to go out to bid. If you want to contribute to that, we'd be more than happy to take your check, number one. Number two, there is no dubbing, there is no editing. What's said here is put up on both of the channels, all right, for people to see. Sometimes there's some technical problems, and as you said, and I haven't seen it, your lips are flapping.
Mr. Alessio, please don't, do not interrupt the commissioner.
Hold on, hold on, we can't talk over each other, okay?
That's why I left the last time.
I listened to you six times tell me about your lips flapping and nothing coming out.
I want to hear, I want to watch your lips flap on TV.
Pay attention, okay?
I'm going to watch your lips flap now.
Watch me, pay attention, okay?
Read my lips.
Right, read my lips.
Fix the microphone.
There is no dubbing, there is no editing. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Teddy Landry, 135 Lakeside Drive. I've spoken up here a lot, and I think that the microphone issue, this microphone works exceptionally well, as I've, in my experience in the past. The microphones that don't quite work as well are the ones that are up there with our Board of Commissioners, because if you go through the minutes from previous meetings, there are a lot of inaudibles, so I've been asking for a couple of years for us to look at the sound system, so I am extremely grateful to Commissioner Tucci and to all of you that we're actually going to look at how we can improve this for all of us, and especially for the people at home who do not have the opportunity to show up here, and so everybody has opportunity to hear. hear everything and everyone. My question tonight, and I thank you Commissioner Petrako for the partnership dealing with the opiate problem in our communities, which is a horrific problem and I'm glad to see that there are some steps being taken to address the issue particularly in our town. My question is that it is, you said that it was between the Township of Nutley and the Nutley Municipal Alliance Committee. Who are the members of the Nutley Municipal Alliance Group?
Sam. Sam, why don't you speak into the mic?
Overall committee is full from all of the government, but we have a smaller committee that acts as a part of public safety.
So, thank you very much, Sam. So what we're saying here is that we have a Nutley Municipal Alliance Committee that is comprised 100% of township employees, is that correct? Yes. I would then formally like to make a request that the membership in the Nutley Municipal Alliance Committee be opened up to include business owners and citizens in Nutley who are not employed by the township and that also there is a secondary municipal alliance committee for the Board of Ed, which you met with in closed executive session last meeting. And the Board of Ed seems to have a little confusion because both committees are called municipal alliance committees and neither one of these committees, the membership is made public to the citizens of Nutley. The Board of Ed Municipal Alliance Committee is comprised solely of Board of Ed members and Board of Ed employees and now I'm learning that the Municipal Alliance Committee for the township is comprised solely of township employees. So in the spirit of opening things up to citizens, okay, and usually municipal alliance, I'm making the request.
You know, why don't we cut this short? I'll look into that for you.
Thank you.
But you were very welcome, Penny.
Okay.
But however, I don't know that that falls within what the municipal alliance is because like Sam said, it's formed with other departments working in conjunction with municipal issues.
Okay.
But I'm going to find out what the definition is and then we'll take it, you know, we'll look into it and we'll see if there's a need for a resident or a business owner or someone to sit in on it.
Okay.
But I'll look into it, just so you know.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's appreciated. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Dot, you want to explain this magazine?
Okay, Dorothy Greengrove, 31 Overlook Terrace, but have another residence, it's 3 Kingsland Street. We were approached by a member of this town apparently who went and when her editor asked them of special places that they wanted to remember, Kingsland Manor was picked as one of them and I think that's quite an honor for the town. And I hope you all agree with me that we have a real chance.
For those at home, this is E. Or View Magazine and it's a upscale publication and listed places that are of interest throughout the country and Kingsland Manor was one of them. So if anybody would like to pick up the magazine and read about the Kingsland Manor. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners? Someone, could I have a motion to go into executive session?
Move it.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law in 1975 permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances and whereas the public body is of the opinion that such circumstances exist and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley moving to close executive session to discuss potential contract negotiations, be it further resolved that at the time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public shall be when and as such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending and/or anticipated legal personnel, contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. Commissioner Tucci. Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. We will be returning to public session after our executive session. No further action will be taken at that time. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Time is 8:32.